Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, I see that the time is the appointed hour, 7:00, which was the time we scheduled for the start of this meeting. So I'd like to welcome you all to this public information session, which is actually a meeting of the Exeter Community Power Aggregation Committee as well. I'm Lou Hestroth. I'm a member of the Exeter Energy Committee and of the Exeter Community Power Aggregation Committee. And thank you all for coming out. I know it's supposed to be spring, but it isn't very spring-like out there today, so I even had to pull my winter coat out. As you all know, the purpose of the meeting is to ensure that Exeter residents are well-informed about community power, what it is, how it works, and how it's going to be rolling out in the next few weeks. The format of the meeting is pretty straightforward. I will start by introducing the rest of us who are here in these nice comfortable chairs. After those introductions, there's a slide presentation that I think will give you a lot of information about community power, probably answer a lot of your questions. And after that slide presentation, we'll open the floor for questions. I think what we'll do is we'll start with questions from people who are here, and then I know there are people who are tuning in remotely, and we'll get to those questions after we've gotten all the questions from people here. So let me introduce the folks that are up here with me. First is Cliff Sinnett, who I think many of you know. Cliff is longtime resident of Exeter. He's a member of the Exeter Energy Committee and the Exeter Community Power Aggregation Committee as well. And he's the former executive director of the Rockingham County Planning Association or Planning Commission, I should say. And to my right is Nick Devonshire. Nick is also a member of the Community Power Aggregation Committee. He's the senior director of investments at Clean Capital, and Clean Capital is a company that invests in and promotes clean energy projects. And I should also say that Nick is also a board member, is a board member of the Board of Directors of the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, EPCNH for short. CPCNH is the nonprofit organization that Exeter has chosen to purchase its electricity and to provide all the administrative responsibilities along with that purchase of electricity. And Nick is Exeter's representative on the Board of Directors of CPCNH. And finally, Henry Hernden to my left. Henry is a consultant with CPCNH and has been very instrumental, very helpful to the Exeter Community Power Aggregation Committee as we looked into community power and began to develop our community power program. He's been the go-to person that we've contacted when we needed advice or had questions. So thanks, Henry, for showing up and giving us more of your time. So, oh, I should also mention that there's another member of the Exeter Community Power Aggregation Committee, and that's Stephanie Marshall. She is unable to be present in person tonight, but I think she's present online, either on or about to go online, so she'll be with us as well. So having given you those starting remarks and introducing the panel, Nick and Cliff, maybe you want to start the slide presentation?
Sure. Do we need to open that to see if there are... See if we have... The Zoom meeting is live?
I don't know. I can see.
Zoom meeting is live.
Is it?
If you want, I can sign in on that, and you can...
We can see.
If you want to look at the members that are attending.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea, because I think when we go to Zoom, you or I have to let them in. Is that the way it works?
Yeah. Well, they can all come in, but if you want them to talk, you have to promote them. But yeah.
Okay. You'll let us know?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I can steal that from you.
All right. Well, while we deal with those technical issues, again, my name is Cliff Sinnett. As Lou said, I'm a member of the Exeter Community Power Aggregation Committee, and we've been working on this for a little while now, and I'll explain that in a minute. But just to give you a big picture of what community power is, and specifically what Exeter Community Power is, basically, simple idea, and that is to aggregate electric demand from customers in a municipality or several municipalities, as is the case here, to try to create enough electric demand so that we can negotiate favorable prices. So that's really all it is, is kind of economies of scale. Ah, thank you.
Thank you.
And so what we're doing is pooling the demand of both residential and commercial customers in Exeter, along with, I think it's at rollout, 10 other or nine other, nine other communities in New Hampshire and soon to be 30, to bring all of that demand together to negotiate a good price. What does not change is Unitil's role. Unitil is still going to, is still our utility. They'll still be delivering the power. You'll still have a Unitil meter. You'll still get bills from Unitil. And I'll show you in a minute what's going to change on your bill, essentially. By the way, the electric distribution, electric power system works in our state, like in many others, there's a separation between where the power gets produced and how it gets delivered. And that separation was created back in the 90s with the idea that the power production could be a competitive market, but the utility should not be, because the utility needs to be there always to be a reliable, dependable method of delivering the power. That needed to be essentially a public utility. So when we combine these two things together, the benefit, at least the benefit we intend, is that we'll have less expensive electricity, but delivered still through the same network, the grid of Unitil. This started a couple years ago. In 2019, the legislature changed the law that made it easier for municipalities to aggregate their electric energy demand. That had always been possible, or at least it had been since the 90s, but it generally never happened. It was a chicken and egg problem. And that got solved by the legislature in 2019, and since then, there's been a lot of activity in the state to establish community power. In March 2022, we presented at-town meeting the electric aggregation plan with the blessing of the Select Board, and the town meeting adopted it, approved it. Since then, things have been moving fairly rapidly. In November of that year, the Select Board chose to use community power of New Hampshire as Lou was explaining, essentially the administrator and the purchaser of our electricity. And they finalized that agreement back in January. On March, they went out through their consultants to buy power. On March 10th, they got very favorable rates, and so it was a go to proceed. The Selectment had always said, unless it's cheaper than the existing default utility rate, we're not going to do this. It was substantially cheaper, so it was a go, and that's why you received those letters in the mail. They were mailed on the 28th, about a week ago. Or no, yeah, you should have gotten, you should have gotten them about a week ago. Anybody not get one who is a Unitil customer in this room? Because if that's the case, we do have a few copies here. So tonight, we're here at April 5th for the informational meeting. Make sure everybody understands what's happening. The deadline to opt out of this, if you don't want to do it, is 30 days from the date the letter was mailed, which was the 28th. That puts it at the 27th is that deadline. That's also a deadline to opt up if you want to purchase electricity that has a higher renewable energy content, and that was one of the reasons we did this, so that we would have that flexibility, same deadline. I would point out, though, that you can even, it's a deadline, but even after that, you can leave, you can come back, you can opt up, you can opt out at any point. Any point becomes effective on your next meter-reading date from whatever date you decide to do that.
What's the advantage or disadvantage?
We'll get to that.
Oh, I mean, it's, looks like a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's pretty much a no-brainer. But we still need to explain it to everybody, because we're moving them from an existing energy source to a different one. So in May, about a month from now, is when this really starts to take effect. Depending on when your meter-reading date is, it may be another month before you actually see it on your bill. And here's how it will roll out. So you've gotten the letters in advance informing that what the rates are going to be, you needed to know the specific rates, and what your different energy supply options are. As I just mentioned, you have 30 days, April 27th, to either opt out or opt up, or, and if you do nothing, if you don't respond at all, you will just automatically be enrolled in the least expensive, the lowest-cost rate. And I'll show you those in a second. What's going to be different on your Unitil bill is that, and I'll show you this in a second, there's a line that says "electric supplier," and that's going to change to be "community power." And I'll show you that in a minute. There are a few groups of customers that aren't, that will not be automatically enrolled, and I'll explain that in a minute, too. As I mentioned a minute ago, you're always free to choose to go back to Unitil to get your electric supply, or to choose another market option. You probably get flyers in the mail every once in a while from other companies that say, here's our offer for the cost of energy, and you're always free to do that as well. So here's a sample Unitil bill. And what it shows in blue, that's the portion of the bill that covers Unitil's costs. That's the cost of maintaining the grid, distributing the electricity through that grid, the billing that they do, the maintenance that they do, the emergency response that they do. All those things are covered in that blue box. The green box is what's going to change if you do nothing and are automatically enrolled into community power. It's going to say somewhere in that, where it says "electric supplier service," probably underneath that, it will say "community power." And the only difference is the rate will change. So just to emphasize, the blue box, that's utilities, that's Unitil's portion of the bill, and the green box is a community power portion. That's the energy itself. There are customers that will not be automatically enrolled, and I'm sure we'll get into this later in the question period, but if you are already signed in, signed up for a competitive supplier like E&amp;H or Constellation Energy or NextEra, whatever, whatever the name might be, American Power, then we will not switch you automatically, because you may have an obligation to them for, to stay with them for a certain period of time. In the law, it's written in the law, we will not automatically enroll those customers. You can choose to opt up yourself, but we would urge you to check with that supplier first to make sure you're not obligated to stay with them for some contract period. There are also net-metered customers, and those are people that have solar panels primarily, that are producing power back into the grid. At the moment, we don't have the ability to properly track the amount of that power that goes back into the grid. So although you could enroll, it's probably not a good idea at this point, because we won't be able to, you won't be able to get the credit for the power that you're putting back into the grid, not yet. We expect that to be resolved. Don't really have a precise timeline for that. But this is the period anyway that you're going to be producing, if you have solar panels, you're going to be producing a lot, probably more than you're receiving. So not a bad idea to just wait anyway until the days get shorter. There are other large-scale customers that are not going to be automatically enrolled. Those are the large-scale general service customers. I think the category, something like 75% of those customers are already on a third-party supplier. So we're not enrolling them automatically. By the way, the first group, the customers buying electricity from a third-party supplier, that only makes up 8% of the residential customers in Unitil's system. So those are the ones that won't be automatically enrolled. This is the letter that, a facsimile of the letter you would have, you should have received about a week ago, and it has all these details that I've been going through. And most important thing is whether and how to respond. As I said before, if you're content with the base level, it's called Granite Basic, it's the least costly, then you don't need to do anything. You're going to be automatically enrolled in that as of your next meter-reading. If you do want to respond, in that letter, there are the three ways that you can respond. You can take a picture of a QR code with your phone and follow the link to that website that's right there, or you can call that toll-free number. And I do want to emphasize, that toll-free number is an 866 number. Don't dial 800 or 888, because we've been getting some feedback that those are going to, phone numbers you don't want to go to. All right? So there's lots of information in that letter, and I'm sure if you've got questions, we'll talk about them in a minute. One of the things that's in the letter is the, is the price sheet, basically, the electricity rates and the choices that you have. And as I mentioned, the one in blue at the top is the basic, Granite Basic, that's the default option. It's 15.8 cents per kilowatt-hour. It has the state minimum renewable energy content of 23.4%. That's going to be 25% in 2025. That was the law that was passed many years ago, 25 by 25. So we're still on track with that. If you want to opt up to a higher renewable energy content, and this, to be honest, is really the whole reason the Energy Committee wanted to pursue this, is to allow people who don't have any other option to put solar panels on their house or a wind farm or whatever, so that they could choose themselves to offset some of their energy with renewable supplies. You have those choices. What struck me about this when I saw it, pleasantly surprised, is that the incremental cost to those renewable content options is pretty small. Even the highest one, Clean 100, is significantly less than the current cost of the default When you do call them, have your Unitil bill in front of you, because they'll need the, if that's the way you do it, they'll need to have your account number. The website has a section off on the right where you can enter your account number, your utility, your zip code, and it will take you through the process. You'll get to a point on the screen where you'll be able to choose one of those options, including the Unitil option where you, that would be the opt-out option. One important point here, these prices are good until July 31st. This is not intended to be, you know, suck you in and then whatever. That's not the idea. The period of the contract that has been negotiated goes from May to July 31st. It will be renegotiated at that point. New rates will be published at that point, and you'll want to check to see what those are. I think there are smarter people here than I that can comment on this, but the general sense is that, one, these, the gap between these rates, the Unitil rate versus the community power rate, will become smaller over time. It's unusually large right now, because Unitil had to purchase power at a very inopportune time, in December, January of this past year, whereas Community Power Coalition purchased it in April or March, a much more favorable time. So we always think that will be less expensive, but the gap won't be that as large as it is right now. And I think Nick is probably most able to comment on that when he takes the mic in a minute. Remember that you're always free to opt back out if you want to, or to change your category of renewable content. And this is where I'm going to hand it over to Nick.
Great. So I'm, can I use this, or do I have to use that microphone?
I think you can.
I think I'm going to try using this, if that's all right. So I'm Nick Devonshire. I'm one of the members of the Exeter Community Power Action Committee.
Aggregation.
Committee.
Aggregation.
Aggregation Committee. There it is.
Yeah, move the microphone closer to yourself, and you'll be all set.
Wonderful. How's this?
Much better.
Okay. So I'm one of the members of the Exeter Committee, and then I'm also the representative to the CPCNH Board. And CPCNH is effectively a nonprofit organization that is serving as an electric retailer. So Exeter was one of the earlier movers here, and I was asked to join, I think, like, two years ago now?
Yeah.
And I was, you know, originally just kind of curious, like, hey, these guys say that they can offer rates below that of Unitil. How? Why? It doesn't make sense. How do you procure power in a cheaper way than Unitil is? They've got the scale. I don't understand. And if we go to the next slide, that's actually kind of the, for me, the big reason to have Exeter join CPCNH was the ability to offer lower rates. And what it got down to was Exeter, CPCNH is able to offer lower rates for two reasons. One is that they're able to hedge their power, they're able to buy power at any time, whereas Unitil has to only buy power once every six months. So they have a one-week window where they have to buy all of their power for the next six months. I equate that to kind of like trying to do your Christmas shopping on December 17th. If you have just this one narrow gap, when that's the only time that you can buy power, you can't cherry-pick the best rates throughout the year. So CPCNH, because it's not a default utility, they are able to buy power selectively and basically buy power when it, when prices in the market dip. And they buy it, and they are able to hold on to it. The other thing is they're able to enter into long-term hedge contracts. So CPCNH can sign a contract for 10, 15 years, whereas Unitil can't. They are required by law to only hedge for six months at a time. And so when you buy power for 10, 15 years at a time, you're able to buy it as a discount. Anything where you kind of are signing up a long-term contract like that, you can often get it cheaper. So for those two reasons, CPCNH is able, I have found, to be able to procure power cheaper. It will, as Cliff said, it will not always be a 39% discount. That was awesome. I was so pleased to see that that's the initial rate that we're able to provide. But what I just explained to you is why, in the long term, CPCNH will be able to provide lower rates than Unitil, and they're committed to setting those rates below Unitil in all cases. There are other benefits, too, though, besides just lowering rates for folks, the clean energy options. So, you know, a lot of people didn't realize that they could switch to a cleaner supply of energy, and I even heard it in this room, people saying like, wait, you know, one cent extra per kilowatt-hour, and I can double the amount of renewable energy in my electricity mix? Like, that sounds pretty good. That... That is another big reason to make the switch, is to give people a trusted source on where to do this. You know, when you're working with another electric retailer, one that's for-profit, you don't necessarily know what the recs, where they'll be coming from, or anything like that. In this case, you have a nonprofit that is, I was, I thought like surprisingly clear about the energy mix that they were out there procuring. Investing in the community, one of the things that you guys should be aware of is that in part, in what CPCNH will be doing is it'll be building up reserves. Those reserves allow it to, you know, weather any sort of downturn in financial markets. If they lock in power, but they end up having to buy a lot of power on the spot market, that's very expensive, this is what allows them to weather that storm. But after five years, they expect those kind of reserves to be filled, and at that point, each town will actually be able to choose what to do with their portion of the reserves. You can invest it into local projects, or you can just lower the, further lower the bills of the ratepayers. And then lastly, local control. Just having this be a New Hampshire-based organization that's serving New Hampshire towns was very important to folks. And for those of you that maybe aren't, are thinking of opting out of CPCNH and going and looking at a for-profit retailer, I will caution you, when you are working with a for-profit company, they have a playbook. They are going to offer you a rate that they think that they can make money on, and as soon as that rate is over, you're going to be on a variable rate plan, and they might jack that up quite a bit and see if you notice. The fact that we're partnering with not a for-profit organization, but a nonprofit organization that is run by the municipalities that are participating, was very important to us. And I, we teased it a bit, but, you know, in the end of the day, we are going to be able to save the average ratepayer about $55 a month, which feels really good. That 39% discount, again, was better than what I could have imagined. It will not always be that high, but CPCNH is committed to keeping that below the default Unitel, Unitel default rate. So, the commitment is, we will always meet or beat the Unitel rate. And if there is ever a situation in which that is difficult, they'll be dipping into those reserves that I talked about, and that will allow them to weather storms, but also make sure that if there ever was a situation where Unitel hedged better than CPCNH did, that we'll just dip into reserves to take care of that. There's the, so I'm the representative, I, I can't say exactly why you guys chose me other than that I'm a big energy nerd, and this is like what I do for a living. So, I do professionally, I do energy investing, and on CPCNH, I've actually been part of the risk management committee.
I've read, Nick, that you, when you were at MIT, you were the head of the Energy Club, is that correct?
That's right.
Well, that was the whole reason we chose you.
That's pretty nerdy.
Yeah. And, and so, what I do on that board specifically is help them think about, what is the right mix of hedging to do? Is this the right time to hedge? How much should we be hedging? And basically, how do we make sure that we're procuring the cheapest power possible? And then Julie, who's, I don't know if Julie's in the room, but she is the alternate.
And she's one of our select.
And, and one of our select women. And then the other key points that I just want to hammer home again, so firstly, like, if, if this sounds good to you, and if 23.4% renewables, which is the state RPS minimum, that's what kind of every utility does, if that sounds good to you, then all you have to do is nothing. This is the, this is the kind of the beauty of this, is that we're able to switch every default ratepayer to CPCNH, and that, that Granite Basic is the plan that we're putting everyone on. If you wanted to opt up to more renewables, or if you wanted to opt out and say, I just want to stay on Unitel, or I'm switching, you know, I want to switch over to someone else that's not CPCNH or Unitel, you should do that before April 27th. And then, it's also a good reminder that participation is voluntary. You can switch off of this at any time. There is no long-term contract for folks, like, this is the same way, right now, you can switch off of Unitel's default service at any time, that will also be the case when we're on CPCNH. Unitel will continue to deliver the electricity, Unitel will still be your distribution utility. If your power goes out, do not call CPCNH, they have nothing to do with that, that is what the distribution utility does, they maintain those lines. All CPCNH is doing is basically signing contracts to procure that power for you, and again, doing it, hopefully, we intend to, at a rate cheaper than Unitel. And anyone who's already on a third-party supplier, we're not going to move you off of that. But again, check your rates and see if you are up for, if you have the ability to switch off, and shop around, whether it's CPCNH or someone else, like, you know, if you haven't been watching it, and you've gone to that variable rate, I'm willing to bet that they've raised that on you quite a bit, and you might not have noticed. And then lastly, like, I think this is important to emphasize, there's no taxpayer money going to this, there is no long-term commitment that Exeter ratepayers have to make, this is all just saying, hey, we can provide cheaper power because we have more hedging options, and we can even build up reserves that eventually will distribute back to those ratepayers, and we can do all that, you know, as a profitable non, as a profitable nonprofit company, as a financially viable nonprofit company. But, you know, in no way is the, is the town of Exeter on the hook for anything here. So, I think that starts the Q and A period.
Good.
Anything that we didn't cover, guys?
No, no, I would, I would simply like to say that your remarks about third-party suppliers, I'm intimately connected with someone who is on, on a third-party supplier, and I see that person every morning in the mirror. And it wasn't until I started to look into Community Power and began to look at my, my electric bill, that I suddenly realized I was paying about three times what the Unitel default rate was. So, just to reiterate what both Cliff and Nick have said, if you are on a third-party supply, monitor your monthly bills to see, in fact, if that initial rate that you paid, which looked so good, continues to be that rate, because it certainly wasn't for me. But, yeah, let's move to questions. And I just would like to say that those who, you who have questions, if you would come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and then ask your question. And I am going to, I'm actually going to start by asking Karen Pryor to come to the microphone, and I will explain why. We have had, as I think Cliff mentioned, we've had a lot of questions about how people who are net-metered, people who have solar panels and produce their own electricity, how they are going to be accommodated by community power. And it's not clear yet how they will be. So, I thought it would be a good idea to sort of get that on the table immediately, find out what we know about that, and where we might be going. And Karen has, is indeed one of those people with solar panels, and is a net-metered customer. So, Karen, ask your questions, make your statement, and introduce yourself.
Thank you, I'm Karen Pryor, I live here in Exeter on Pickpocket Road. Thank you very much, Lou, and to all of you for a great presentation. I am so excited about the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, I think Exeter is very fortunate to be part of that indeed. And one of the things I hope, because I think Exeter is a progressive community, that maybe the Energy Committee could help maybe monitor us, educate us, on what percentage of Exeter residents are actually taking advantage of the Clean 100. I think that would be great, kind of a community challenge to get us there for renewables, because this isn't just about today, it's about tomorrow and the next generation that lives here, so. But with that said, I did get the flyer in the mail, and I started doing my digging, and I spoke to a representative at Community Power to ask about the renewables, and particularly the statement that was in the flyer, that Unitel was not complying with New Hampshire law with regard to providing that metering data. And unfortunately, the representative I spoke to was not able to answer that question, they really didn't have, couldn't speak to it. So, I dug further and spoke to representatives at Unitel, and actually was fortunate enough to speak with the manager there quite extensively, and then also to Revision Energy. And as you articulated, Unitel doesn't care where any of us get our power from, we can get it from a third-party, it, it doesn't matter. And Nick, I really liked the way you described the fact that CPCNH can aggregate, that they can buy regularly, they can buy huge blocks at different times, and that Unitel is not capable, it's not able to do that. So, they're not the enemy, they're just, the way they, the blocks in which they can purchase is just very different. So, to be able to get the best of both worlds of taking advantage of CPCNH and the distribution services that Unitel provides is great. Several years ago, so I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, I'm not, you know, I just didn't want the utility to be put under the bus. But my biggest concern, obviously, was around the solar, and that Unitel supposedly isn't complying with New Hampshire law. And I heard differently, both from Unitel and from Revision Energy. We, our panels were put in a number of years ago, when our panels were installed, Revision Energy said to us very clearly that if you're on a third-party supplier, that they cannot take care of your net-metering at this point, and so you need to switch back to Unitel, which we did. And so, that's how we've been getting our service and managing our net-meetering, we get our reports off of our own dashboard and through Knowles, that tells us exactly our usage and what's being bought back, and tracking the power that's going back to the grid. So, when I spoke to the folks at Revision, the representatives at Revision, what they educated me on a little bit was that they had spoken, the folks at CPCNH, over a year ago, when this was all being discussed, and that they had been told that CPCNH were advised that they weren't able to get an opt-in because they couldn't find that third-party supplier that would do that. And that's my biggest concern, like, so when will we be able to, so that there's not the third-party suppliers right now that are willing to take care of net-meetering customers? And so, certainly, the cost reduction is great, but I also feel like those of us who invested early in clean energy shouldn't be held hostage to that, and that it actually, this needs to be dealt with much, much sooner versus later, particularly if there's so many other communities in the state of New Hampshire coming online. It makes me wonder, you know, how is Liberty handling this, how is Eversource handling this, the other utility companies across the state? So, for me, it's a big deal, for all of us, I think we all want to be investing in clean energy as much as possible, it's not just about economics. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, fortunately, we have Henry here, who I think is probably in the best position to give an answer to, to Karen's question, so. And also, I should say, we have Alec Omira here. Alec, where are you? Somewhere, there he is. Alec is, works for Unitel, he's in public relations with Unitel, so Alec, feel free to offer your ideas and your comments about community power, or about net-meetering in general. So, Henry, first to you.
Yeah, I want to thank the commenter, that was very well articulated, a lot of those issues, you're really, you're right on it, and net-meetering, it is important. It's something that I know Exeter Community Power and Community Power Coalition as a whole very much wants to provide service for. When Exeter adopted a plan at town meeting, they detailed that they would provide service as is allowed for under state law in New Hampshire, where community power programs, they can incorporate the net-meetering customers. There, there's sort of a technical component, and there's collaboration and data sharing required with utility companies. I can say that I think Unitel has been more forthcoming with collaboration and data sharing than some of the other utilities, but in order to properly incorporate the net-metered customers, Community Power Coalition needs to understand on a monthly basis, what is the net export? How much electricity are you, if the customer is putting more power onto the grid than they're consuming, how much is that? So, that Exeter Community Power and the Coalition can understand how much to track, and how much less power they have to buy elsewhere, because that's being supplied from within the community. So, that data has not yet been forthcoming, and I don't know all of the details of, you know, how it is shared, I'd be curious to hear Alec's response to that. But I think the point is, we all do want to support and include the net-meetering customers. Many of the folks who really set up Community Power and the Coalition are net-meetering customers, and they themselves want to participate, and are also frustrated that they cannot. So, I'm sure this will be resolved in good time, but it has, has yet to be resolved.
Thanks, Henry. Alec?
Sure.
Here's a mic for you. Oh, sorry, no, you can, I'm sorry.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Alec Omira, I am manager of External Affairs at Unitel, and I recall pretty much everyone at this panel from when we did an information session on this about a year and a half ago, when you guys were just starting to look into it. And I recall sitting with each of you and talking a little bit about aggregation and what it means to utilities, and I think you guys framed it very, very well here tonight. Unitel is a firm believer in giving all customers all the options that are available to them in terms of third-party supply and aggregation. Aggregation is not new to us, in fact, we've had a number of aggregate communities in Massachusetts that we've worked with. In fact, I believe right now, in Massachusetts, and we're a smaller utility in Massachusetts, but approximately 85% of our customers are currently off-default supply in Massachusetts. We have a number of communities that have had aggregate rates for quite some time, and we work with those communities, and we find ways to get things done with them, and it's been a very good back and forth there. So, I did talk with the manager that Karen spoke with, he says hi, by the way, he thought, he thinks, he wishes all customers were as focused on energy issues as you were, he said. He thought you were, it was a lovely conversation, and I wanted to pass that along. So, yes, this is a known issue. This is something that has been talked about for quite some time, it's been part of the regulatory process. Like you said, like Karen said, it's something that is known in terms of net-meetering customers, so this is, this is nothing new, this is known. The issue at hand is data collection, you know, making sure that the specific way that is being talked about in terms of gathering that data for utilities requires a build-out. And that means that we need to create something. Right now, it simply doesn't exist as far as an ability to be able to present the data that is wanted by Community Power currently, as it stands. So, what that means is, you need to go and you need to basically get that process done. As a utility, as a regulated utility, everything we do has an associated cost, and when we do that associated cost, it ultimately becomes part of the rate. You had the green box and the blue box there. So, the green box is all about this supply part that you guys are talking about, and we have to manage the blue box. So, when there is a build-out, ultimately, there is a cost associated with that. Are we going to go back to the blue box? That would be fantastic.
Oh, yeah, you were referencing it, I thought we could go back.
I love that, thank you so much. So, yeah, so the blue box is the Unitel part of the bill, that's the poles, the trucks, the people, the projects, everything like this. So, in this particular case, with this project, it, the build-out appears that it would have potentially a cost that may be significant, and as a result of that, it could potentially impact folks' rates, both here in town and in other communities. So, when that has a potential to exist, we have a responsibility as a regulated utility to acknowledge that. So, I don't have a clear answer as to what the path forward here is going to be, I know that we are talking with the regulators on this, we expect that there will be a request for a waiver of some sort on this particular issue going forward. But, you know, at the end of the day, Unitel is a supporter, ideologically speaking, of the value of aggregation and third-party options for our customers. So, we're, you know, we're committed to that, and, you know, we like working with folks, we like being collaborative on these things. There is a known issue here, and that's not really a surprise for anyone here, and I'm sure that the process will continue to be collaborative at the state level.
What do you mean by waiver?
Waiver, so, right now, what we need to do is, we need to go to the New Hampshire PUC and basically outline exactly what we've outlined here. Again, it's known, but the process needs to kind of be formalized, there's going to be continued discussions on that point. In other words, this, it's not settled yet, is what I'm saying. So, there's going to be continued discussions all about it. Does that help? Yeah?
And if I could respond to that, and I.
Please.
Agree with a lot of what you said, and I do appreciate that perspective. I guess a couple of counterpoints, perhaps. You know, the law has been on the books since 2019, and we've known that these should be allowed to serve net-meetering customers since 2019. So, we've had several years to implement those fixes, and then the rules have been on the books as well since last year. books as well since last year. And, you know, I think there's, there is a cost perhaps here, but we're talking about a fairly simple dataset, right? It's how much, every month, does the net metering customer export a certain amount of energy and how much is that?
I get that on my dashboard.
Right, so, yeah. And so again, I agree that there will be sort of a collaborative solution here, but a solution here. But also, when you say we're going to go for a waiver, what I hear is, we'll ask the state to allow us not to comply with the law to allow Community Power to serve net metering customers.
Well, the issue as it stands right now is that the technology doesn't exist in-house. So it's not a matter of can we or can't we? We can't at this time. So that's why when I say we're going before the PUC, the process is ongoing. That's just the fact of the matter at this point. Now, I have been involved with utilities at Unitil now for 13 years or so. At no point in that time have I ever learned that something is simpler than it appears. Everything has a level of complexity to it. And my understanding is, from our folks in billing, this is a place where there is some substantial complexity in terms of the kind of information that you guys are looking for. That's just the nature of it at this time. I don't see a ton of value in going back and forth in this particular forum. I think it's fair to say that we disagree with the way it has been framed in the particular mailing at this time. But again, we're about collaboration and we want to continue working with you guys and we support the town of Exeter in looking at aggregation options.
Great. Well, thank you. I mean, I think what we're seeing is that there will be a solution at some point. Both sides are working towards collaboration and working to serve the public. So it may take a while, but I think we'll get there. Is that an accurate statement?
Well, we have a responsibility for all of our customers to make sure that the solution makes sense for everyone. That's what we're committed to.
Terrific. Well, thanks, Alec.
Thank you.
Yes, other questions? Would you like to ask?
Really, um, sorry, I'm asked, but I got to wait.
No problem.
My name is Chrissanne Spadaro. I live in Exeter. It's a real simple one. Is this just a matter of tabulating the in and the out of energy coming from these net metered customers that are actually giving us energy? I'm not, is it?
Say you have a solar customer and in the month of March, they, their solar array produces 600 kilowatt-hours, but the home only uses 500 kilowatt-hours. There is a net export of 100 kilowatt-hours. We need to understand how much is being net exported so we can know how to track and credit them for the excess power that they put onto the grid.
And you're saying that on the dashboard, that's all, information's already available?
It's on, but that's through my Revision Energy and through Knowles and through Unitil. So Unitil, actually, aren't you already tracking my net metering?
We are.
Right. So if you're already tracking my net metering, what difference does it make?
Really, I don't understand. I mean, I'm being, I'm not being facetious. I really don't understand how difficult it would be to gather that information and give it to the Exeter Community Power. That seems like a very easy, I don't know. Does everybody else feel that way? It just seems like something we do every day in our own bookkeeping at our homes, you know, in and out kind of thing.
I think that's a good question.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yes.
My name is Rick Russman and I have Russman Law over at Fortland Center Street. We, our panels went on at December of 2019, so it's been one of the early ones that Revision did. And it just seems to me, it's just a matter of, somebody's got to write a program for the utility to be able to do that. And I would almost think that, and maybe it can't be done in-house, but there's somebody out there that could write a program to homogenize all that stuff off the dashboard. And it, I mean, it isn't rocket science, that's for sure. But so it's, I mean, we're fortunate because we're there during the day when the sun's shining and on the weekends we're not, so there's a lot of net metering going on. And so our bills are tiny because it really doesn't make a difference. But for some of the, Karen, it probably does.
Well, for all, I mean, there's more and more solar panels. We want to celebrate that, right?
Right.
One issue I think is at play here, and I think Alex referred to it, is that if there is a cost in getting this system functioning, there are rules about who pays for that. And it's not supposed to be paid for by the general default utility customers. And so that's where part, I think that's where part of the issue is. Who pays for it? And the PUC has a say in-
What does that acronym stand for?
Public Utilities Commission.
Sorry.
Public Utilities Commission has a say in determining where that cost should be paid.
Other questions? Things that don't have anything to do with net metering. Go ahead.
Does each person who does-
Can you, yeah. Thanks, Pat.
Some people need to hear you.
My name is Pat Yash and I live in Exeter. I get my bill automatic pickup because I do my banking online to pay my Unitil bill. To, if I'm staying, if I don't, if I want to change, or is there anything I have to do to change that, to notify? Let's say, is, I want to stay with it. Do I have to communicate with Unitil that the billing should happen differently?
If you want to stay with Unitil as your default supplier, then you'd have to either call that 1-866 number or go online to exeter.communitypowernh.gov and go through that process of opting out. So in your case, you'd be opting out. If you wanted to do nothing and just take the Community Power's default rate, you don't have to do anything.
Okay.
If you want to have a higher percentage of renewables, then you again have to contact either through the website or that 866 number to make that choice.
Were you worried about the billing being different?
That's what I wanted to ask.
No matter what, your billing won't change. It's still all through Unitil.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good thing to address is that you're not going to get a second bill. You'll continue to just pay one energy bill and it's just that green box there that's going to change. And, you know, I think that's a really important thing to ask, like, hey, is there another bill coming? Do I have to set up another auto pay? The answer is no. You should be all set as-is.
Other questions? Yes.
Herb Moyer, Exeter. I just need to formulate in my mind, how is it that you will know ahead of time how much power the community wants to have from source X, Y, or Z? You know, let's say 80% of the people who choose to opt up for 100% renewable power, you've already bought power ahead of knowing who, the number of people that are going to fall into a different category are. How does that work?
I think that's for you, Nick.
So for the renewables portion, at least initially, we're satisfying all this by just buying REX, renewable energy credits. And so we'll be buying REX from, I actually don't know if they'll be New Hampshire Class 1 or Class 2 REX. But, you know, it's, it's all done through just REX purchases. Over time, I expect CPCNH will be actually signing contracts with renewables power plants where they're basically saying, I want to buy your power for a fixed PPA price and I'll also take the REX. And those will be bundled. But at least to begin with, all they need to do is look at, all right, how much power was consumed, then we'll go out and purchase REX to match that amount of power. But there's also a broader question about, I think you were asking about, well, how much do you know to, how much energy do you know to hedge for? Is that?
Yeah.
So that's, when we're doing all of this hedging, we are making forecasts based on what we think Exeter's load is going to be. But in the end of the day, we're hedging, you know, probably up to 95% of our expected load. But we have to buy, you know, exactly the number of kilowatt-hours that were consumed every hour. And that's a market called the ISO New England market. So every state in New England, every, you know, at least in New England, that is the market where energy is bought. So if we hedge 95% of our expected load for a six-month period, but we end up consuming 105% of our expected load, then that last 10% is going to be bought on the spot market. And that's why we also have to build up reserves because if we have to buy on the spot market and it ends up being a lot more expensive than what we anticipated, then CPCNH isn't going to make as much money as they had expected. So that's another reason that reserves have to be built up.
And tell me a little more about REX. What really are they and who manages that? And-
Sure. So the renewable energy credit is just the certificate for the clean energy aspect of power. So in my, you know, day-to-day job, I manage hundreds of power plants and, you know, I sell the power and the REX decoupled. So we have a bunch of solar panels and the energy is kind of sold on the spot market that way. And then the REX are sold separately, oftentimes to someone who, someone other than who's buying the power. Those REX are, those REX are, you, at least in New Hampshire, to meet the state RPS, so that 23.4% renewables. There's a whole suite of rules around how many REX from each power type you have to buy. There's, I think there's four different classes of REX in New Hampshire, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And so in the granite basic that we're signing everyone up for, it's essentially saying, all right, we're going to abide by all the rules that the state of New Hampshire has set out for any electric retailer. As you go up to clean 100, I think the intention is to continue buying the same types of REX, but we can explore other types potentially. You know, I think the big question is, hey, how much of this will come from solar wind versus how much from hydro and that sort of thing. But it's something that we'll frankly explore as an organization.
Are investors playing in this REX market?
I would say, like, I'm an investor. My company owns power plants and we sell REX. So yeah.
All right, good. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Go. Susan.
Susan Scales, also of Exeter. We have contracted with a third-party energy supplier and so we're tied up in our contract through the end of October. How will I go about opting in and looking at your offer at the end of August when they send us their new offer for the next year?
I think it's just that phone number.
Yeah, I mean, as I mentioned, August 1st to January 31st will be the next contract period for Community Power. So the rates will change. They'll be posted on the Community Power website so you can see what the rates are before you make your decision. And then if you decide you want to change your supplier to Community Power, you would call that number or get on the website and sign up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody remotely asking questions? Because I'm asking Exeter TV.
I don't see that many.
No, I don't see anybody. Oh, there's Jessica. Let me see. Can I?
While that's happening, I wanted to address something that Karen brought up and I hope that none of our comments were perceived as being critical of Unitil for its pricing because there's a reason why Unitil cannot be more market savvy essentially in how they purchase power. It was, it's set up that way in the law because when deregulation happened, the intent was that utilities were not going to be the source of power. They're going to be the distribution utility. However, as a fallback, they are required to provide default power for anybody who didn't go out and choose to purchase it on their own. And as it turns out, as I said, 8% of us have, in that intervening 20-something years, have chosen to go out and purchase it on their own. It just hasn't worked as a, as a market mechanism. So Unitil is there as the backstop for providing default power. And in order to make, in a sense, the law sort of intentionally disadvantages that by saying you can only do it every six months and it has to be a fixed six-month contract. So that's, that's the story there. That's why they're not able to be flexible in how they do that contracting. And that's why when circumstances conspire, like they did in December and January, when you know things were happening in Ukraine and so forth and so on, and the energy markets were going crazy, that's when their time was up and they had to purchase new power. So that's one of the reasons why it's so expensive right now.
Buying power on December, buying your Christmas gifts on December 17th.
Right.
This is why you don't want to be forced to only be able to hedge and buy power in that one window. So again, I absolutely agree. You know, I think the fact that, like, the 26 cents that is the Unitil default rate right now, that is simply a product of when they went out and procured power in that window, that was the going rate. And that's why I've also, you know, want to reiterate that the 39% savings that we're able to offer now, it won't always be this good. It really won't. Because come, you know, we won't have that advantage of hedging at a more opportune time. Come July 31st, come August 1st, we're probably going to be, you know, out there in the market around the same time. But we can hedge ahead of that window and we can hedge after that window and we can sign long-term contracts. And those, again, are the reasons that we're ultimately, should be able to offer rates cheaper than Unitil.
So, so is it, is it your belief as an educated group on this issue that the fix is a legislative fix?
In terms of Unitil being able to-
Right.
So it's, the, while it's, I will say this and this is my own personal view.
Yeah.
While it is, it has its downsides in terms of not being able to offer that flexibility, it is at least transparent. Like, you know, Unitil can't go and sign some long-term contracts that end up being unfavorable. It is, you know, it's completely transparent. And I think that's one of the reasons that the law was set up that way. It's just, hey, every six months we go out and we procure our power at whatever the going rates are. But here with CPCNH, since it's not the default utility, it's allowed to go and sign those long-term contracts.
But in your opinion, would it be difficult to maintain a level of transparency and still have more flexibility in terms of utilities purchasing across the calendar?
I mean, it goes back to the intent. The intent of separating the power generator from the utility, that was the intent of the law. And there's not really, I don't think there's a desire, or there wasn't in that deregulation, to have you, to incentivize utilities to purchase the power for us. The market was supposed to be incentivized to do that. And that's really where we're coming from.
Okay.
In a way, you can think of Community Power as the completion of that deregulation or that separation of the utility monopoly that does pulls and wires from the competitive power market. Because all the large commercial customers, when, when this separation occurred, went out and started shopping around for competitive supply options. And they benefited from lower rates as a result of that. The typical residential customer does not take advantage of that. And then there are some of those predatory practices that, you know, folks who aren't paying super close attention to the fine print might get, you know, caught up in. So anyway, this Community Power is a way to give those benefits to the collective residents and businesses, give them a scale where they can have an advantage in the market. And it is sort of a, it comes full circle from that original separation.
Essentially, it's repairing the market problem.
Well, and also that CPCNH is a nonprofit. You're not out there, I mean, you're there at our service, not out there to make money off of power. So the aggregation works, but the profit margin is superior nonprofits. So I think that makes a difference too.
Yeah, very helpful. Thank you very much.
Right ahead.
Dale James, and I live in Exeter. I've been confused from the beginning when I first got-
The letter. The notification-
Windle into Town Square Energy. And so that, I presume, is a third-party.
Third-party, yeah.
Yeah. I don't even know when I'm supposed to have a choice. And this is a supplier, am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what would I, what am I supposed to do to switch over? What is the first thing that I do? I call them. I call them.
Are you currently enrolled with that third-party supplier?
I think so.
Oh, you think so? Well, I, yeah, I guess I would recommend the first thing you do is to call and make sure that you are enrolled with them. And if you are, find out what your contract says. How long is your contract in existence? When, when does it expire?
I don't know if it does expire.
Well, I think it must. I don't think you can sign on in perpetuity, but you could, and you could cancel it or terminate it if it does continually renew.
Well, I don't think I've ever actually canceled.
Yeah.
Would, if I did not renew it, would it automatically go into Unitil? Because I get a Unitil bill, but I get it online, so I never see it.
It would depend on your contract. And they couldn't auto-renew.
They couldn't?
They could.
Oh, they could.
See me afterwards. We'll take a look at it.
And I can only tell you that when I was in that predicament, I did have to call the third-party supplier. It took a little while, but I was able to get through and I was able to cancel my contract and go back to Unitil's default. So you should be able to do it, but I think you'll have to get in touch with your supplier and hopefully on your bill, it will give the supplier's name. It may not give the phone number, but you can probably find the phone number fairly easily.
Yeah, well, I think I have a phone number, but I don't have a bill because I'm trying to be green and so everything's on my computer and I'm a techno dodo, so I never see the bill.
We'll try to help you out afterwards. Anything else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Eric Sinclair. I live in Exeter. I just wanted clarification. In the letter that she sent, the rates that are stated are good until July 31st.
That's right.
And am I also correct, from what I've heard you say, that they will change every three months going forward?
Every six months.
Every six months.
The intention is actually have them change in the same window that the default rates that the respective utilities are changing.
Okay. And the factors that come into play that affect those rates are basically unforeseeable?
Yep. It's basically what's the, what's the forward and futures market price of electricity? So in the lead-up to that July 31st, kind of like, hey, August 1st, the new rates change. CPCNH's risk management committee will go out there and procure, you know, basically look to the market and say, we need to procure this many megawatts of power and this varying levels for the next three months, six months, however long we're looking to hedge for. And then we'll kind of go and collect those hedges. And at some point, normally about a month before that August 1st switch, we'll kind of look at the hedges that we got in and decide, all right, given the hedges, given what we think our load is going to be, this is the rate that we think that we can charge. And again, we think that we're always going to be able to offer that below the Unitil rate. But every six months, it will be a CPCNH decision, all right, what are we going to charge the customers for the next six months?
Okay.
And Nick, am I right in thinking that anyone can contact CPCNH roughly a month before the rate change to find out what the new rates will be for that next six-month period?
That's right. The intention is to make it kind of like, you know, as known as the utility, like, hey, when, you know, give people notice ahead of time, this is what the new rates will be starting August 1st. They'll go for six months and that sort of thing.
Okay.
They'll be posted 30 days in advance of a change. There you go.
Okay. Does a program like this exist in any other state in the country now?
Yeah.
Any, I think. Certainly California has been doing this for quite some time.
Massachusetts, as Alec mentioned.
Well, that's a really good point. If a state like California is doing that, you know, is doing this and they're handling the net metering, can we not, like, get education across state lines?
Making computers talk to each other is complicated business.
Well, is there any data from any of those other programs that gives some idea how much the rates fluctuate every six months?
There's a, there's a study from the Massachusetts market and I think it's Applied Economics Clinic. They have purple branding on the website. But anyway, they have done a study on what's the average rate comparison and they looked at about 8% to 12% savings relative to those utility supply rates. There's one data point.
Okay.
But then in just in terms of how much might, like, what might my August 1st rate be? It entirely depends on the going rate of electricity. What informs that? For the most part, it's the price of natural gas. And, you know, that's, natural gas prices were Q4 2022. They were the highest we've seen them in years and years and years. So that's why you ended up with a 26 cent default service supply rate.
Okay. Thank you very much and thank you for all the work you've done on this.
Any other questions? Would you please state your name and your address?
Renee Allen, High Street. I believe I saw a presentation where there were only four states in the country that did not have Community Power scheme and we were one of the four.
Thank you.
There, I have different information, I guess. I think there's, there's about a dozen that have a version of Community Power out there and it's, you know, concentrated, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, maybe New York and a couple of other east coasters and then out on the California side. But most of them don't have this kind of program.
Maine, I think, right?
Maine? Anything else?
Just a quick question. The organization, do you have to go through auditing to manage finances and so forth like that?
Henry's project. Yes, so written into the joint powers agreement and the bylaws of the nonprofit is the creation of an audit committee that is required to have audits at least once every two years and that will be reported to the members, including the Town of Exeter, and made available publicly.
Okay, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Before we do, I just want to go on record to thank both the Exeter Select Board for all the assistance they have given us throughout this process. And it's been about a two and a half, almost three-year process. And we've always gotten the support from the Select Board. I'd also like to thank Bob Galacki and his crew from Exeter TV because they too have been, they've been over backwards to make life easy for us and to get information out. So thanks to both of them or all, both of those organizations for all the help we've gotten. So I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Three of us are in favor, so meeting adjourned. Thanks a lot.